Everybody, we're going to start the East Brandywine Township Carlino, East Brandywine LP preliminary final land development application hearing again today. This is part two from a continuation, I believe, from December 18th?
12th.
December 12th. Just a reminder, we're going to be on our best behavior today and try and give everybody one warning for any no argumentative discussions. Let's try and keep it civil. The other thing is, I want to let everybody know, I have to leave at 2:00 today. So, we will still have a quorum after 2:00. If we don't get done by 2:00, I will watch the transcripts for the final hour or two, if it goes that long, to get caught up to speed, so it's not as though anything's being missed for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristin Camp right now, and we'll continue where we left off with the last hearing on the 12th of December.
Thank you. I want to introduce some additional board exhibits that address, some of these exhibits address preliminary matters that Mr. Prince and Mr. Orlando raised on behalf of their respective clients at the first hearing, and some are just exhibits that I feel need to be added so that the record is fully complete. It was brought to my attention that the East Brandywine zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance were not officially made exhibits, so I think that's important to do that. So, we left off at the first hearing with Board Exhibits 1 through 39. I'm picking up at Exhibit Board 40. I've put in front of everybody a smaller packet. That packet has the revised table of contents for the Board Exhibits, so you can replace out the one in your binders with the current new four-page. There's a smaller one, Mr. Prince, that I set in front of you on your table. Two packets.
No, I know, I heard it, there was no, I didn't, oh, sorry, I missed it.
Okay. I did not copy for everybody the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. I figured you have those. If you need them, I can get them to you. So, I'd like to start with Board Exhibit 40 as being the East Brandywine Township zoning ordinance as of July 3rd, 2018, which was the date when the application was filed. Board Exhibit 41 is the Township's subdivision and land development ordinance as of that same date, July 3rd, 2018. Board Exhibit 42, in an abundance of caution, I just wanted to re-advertise today's hearing. I did so in the Daily Local News. On December 31st, 2018, and January 7th, 2019, I have the proof of publication from the advertisement marked as Board Exhibit 42. Board Exhibit 43 is a letter, it goes back to April 21st of 2017, from Mr. Prince, addressed to Mr. Fisher, where he had requested Mr. Fisher to recuse himself in a prior application. Board Exhibit 44 is a letter dated June 20th, 2017, from Mr. Fisher to Mr. Prince in response to his request for recusal, and again, that related to a prior application. Board Exhibit 45 is a letter dated December 28th, 2018, from Mr. Fisher to Mr. Prince, and this letter was written in response to the preliminary issue that Mr. Prince raised at the December 12th hearing, where he asked Mr. Fisher to recuse himself. So, that correspondence is in response, where Mr. Fisher says that he will not be recusing himself. Board Exhibit 46 is email communication between Mr. Orlando, Mr. Esti, myself regarding the subpoena request. Mr. Orlando had made some preliminary comments and actually marked as LNR Exhibit 1, an email exchange relating to the issuance of subpoenas. We had some follow-up communication relating to that after the last hearing, and I think that those emails are relevant, and I've marked them as B46. Board Exhibit 47 is email communication from Mr. Prince to myself, and that's dated December 24th, 2018. Board Exhibit 48 is email communication from Mr. Kaplan to me, dated December 26th, 2018. Board Exhibit 49 is email communication from Pamela Tobin, dated December 26th, 2018, and attached to that was an order dated February 20th, 2018. And I do, when looking at these this morning, I think that there was another page to her email that I don't have in your, with, I didn't give to you in your packet, so I'll make sure that B49 is supplemented with all pages of that communication. B50 is Judge Nagel's Rule 1925 opinion, in specific case number 2017-06177, and B51 is correspondence dated January 14th, 2019, from myself to Mr. Prince, and that correspondence addressed the second preliminary matter that Mr. Prince raised at the December 12th hearing, and that was a request that the full Board recuse itself from sitting in voting on this particular plan. Mr. Prince had asked that the Board, he felt that they were, could not be unbiased, and that they were not impartial, and he had asked for the Attorney General to appoint a different hearing officer. The Board has decided not to do that, a majority of the Board, I should say, has decided that that is not going to happen, and B51 is in response. So, counsel, are you comfortable with the, those Board Exhibits being put into the record?
I am. Are you asking your Madam Solicitor if there's an objection to any of those?
Right. I mean, I think at the first hearing, we set forth that we were going to try to make sure the record was complete with various communications, various documents, without having to necessarily call the author of all those. A lot of those are communication between councils, so I didn't think there'd be an objection.
I have an objection to 47, 48, 49. I do not believe that are relevant, and I don't believe that they're relevant at all. These go to personal opinions of the scripters with regard to a matter that is the subject of litigation now in the Commonwealth Court. Furthermore, they refer to an adjunctive proceeding and imply, Ms. Tobin implies that it's but a matter of time before the motion is granted. Alas, the motion has not been granted. The motion, which was Mr. Larkin's motion, was quashed, and therefore, in fairness, I believe it's essential that the decision quashing the motion be entered of record.
Why don't we mark that as B52 then?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. And you, just real quick clarification, you had said litigation with the scripters. You meant the waters?
No, scripters. The individuals who wrote the letters, Ms. Tobin, Mr. Kaplan, and myself, I think, were the scripters of those.
Oh, 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 I thought you said scribners, meaning, okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Prince, why don't I mark as Board Exhibit 52, an order dated January 3rd, 2019?
I would just like to elaborate for a moment further on those correspondences because they're a misimpression. The matter that is ruled, the court, it was up in appeal, is by and large a procedural matter, not a substantive matter. So, insofar as these emails imply that the question and issue will be resolved in that litigation is irrelevant. I would also point out to the court that the litigation, if you examine what was appealed and what was pending, it involved the preceding plan that by all agreements now is dead. It did not involve, it did not address this plan. It is a 2017 appeal, I think, so I think that just needs to be borne in mind. Then, by your leave, I'd also like to address your letter, number 51. I apologize to the extent that I apparently was unable with sufficient clarity to explain my position. The letter misstates that position, so simply let me restate what was the position and is our position, which is that this has nothing to do with condemnation. It is a misconception to see this as a condemnation issue, or the law was wrapped up or resolved by the court in the condemnation decision. There is no question but that. Absent the Supreme Court granting an appeal, the decision of the Commonwealth Court affirming that the taking of the property was for a other purpose, that's it. That's a binding decision. That's not the issue that I raised. The issue I raised is an interpretive statute section in the eminent domain code that refers to one of the duties that a condemnure has after a condemnation is incurred, after you are re-owning, which you now do, subject, of course, to pain. So, that statutory section says that once you condemn, among the other duties that are enumerated that you have, one of those duties is that if you abandon the use, then you must turn it back to my client, if that occurs within 10 years of the date of condemnation. It's still within 10 years, in our argument, very simply, and I'm not trying to drag this out, is that what you did in issuing the letter was an act of abandonment. It's a definition, it's a word, there are a couple cases on it, very old. There is no definitive case on this point. There is one case that's gone up and back, this is a Chester County case. The Commonwealth Court was addressing the Chester County question of whether this section or the private, the Public Property Act applied, and I may have the name of that act wrong. The lower court did not reach the decision on which of the two statutory sections it was relying on. It was sent back to the Court of Common Pleas for resolution, and the matter was settled. No appeal was taken.
Objection. This is oral argument on a legal decision.
Okay. But I think-
Without a time. I think that we all understood from the correspondence back and forth, what Mr. Prince's position was.
Okay. I think it's helpful because-
Well, I'm sorry if I wasted my breath, but I'm not as, apparently, as erudite as Mr. Kaplan, and I was confused by the correspondence, and I just wanted to clarify, so there would be no confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Prince, because I myself was confused, and I went back and read the transcript. I just want to be clear. Your position is that by the Board of Supervisors issuing the letter of December 7th, 2018, which was marked as Exhibit B33, you think that act constitutes an abandonment of the condemned land?
I think that constitutes an act of abandonment of a portion of the condemned property.
Okay. We will take that under advisement. Mr. Kaplan, do you want to respond to that in any fashion? Okay. We'll take it under advisement. Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Orlando, do you have something to add? You look like you want to say something.
I do not believe that Board Exhibits 46, I'm sorry, 47 through 50 are relevant to this proceeding, and I do object to those. That has to do with the former plan and is not at issue here, and I believe it's improper to suggest that they should be marked and used by the Board as relevant to the matter before us today, which is the 2016 Carlino Plan. So, I do not agree that they should be made part of the record. 40 through 46, I have no objection to.
To 47 through 50. And let me explain. First of all, Exhibit 47, Mr. Prince sent to me with respect to this hearing, telling me who he intended to call, and advising that he intended to raise an issue with respect to a 1995 BVA plan. So, he's raising it as an issue that he wants to raise in this hearing today. I had not been the solicitor before and needed to understand the background of an issue relating to that 1995 plan. Mr. Kaplan and Ms. Tobin had the opportunity to respond, so it's, I think it's a little bit absurd that you're saying you don't find it relevant to this plan when you raised it, or Mr. Prince raised it, with respect to the hearing we're having on this current plan. So, we can agree to disagree, and we will put it under advisement. But I think that B47, Mr. Prince wrote, there was response back, and I think it is relevant to this, I mean, if you want to, if you want to take the December 24th email back and say that it was not meant for this plan, then we can do that, but it clearly was sent to me to advise me who you intended to call as witnesses, and to advise me that you intended to raise a legal argument with respect to a 1995 land development plan for the BVA parcel.
I would like to-
Now, excuse me.
I would like to make my comment, if I may.
Before you do, she's talking to me, and I'm going to respond to that.
Mr. Orlando, let's remain calm. We're five minutes into this hearing. We can be professional with one another and not get argumentative.
I'm not being unprofessional, ma'am, but I am going to get my point across. B47 was copied to me. B48 was not. B49 was not.
And I provided them to you yesterday, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right, and that's why I'm objecting today.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just make a brief statement. As we saw in Mr. Prince's final statement at the last hearing, he is intending to attack the fairness of this hearing. We've heard it over and over again, and one of the things that I see that they're going to attack the fairness for is this position with regard to subpoenas, not addressing the substantive issue. I just think that since this is going to go back to court, the full record should be included, so I think that you should include the documents that you proposed to include.
That was my intention. I assumed that you disagreed with our legal rulings with respect to subpoenas. Obviously, you probably will disagree with the rulings with respect to the recusal of both Mr. Fisher and the Board, and I think that the Court needs to understand the rationale behind all of those decisions, which is why I thought that those email communications were relevant. At this point, Mr. Prince, you are going to proceed with witnesses, is that correct?
Can I do one cleanup thing, just for one second? I submitted a series of exhibits that were all court, they were court opinions, and I don't know whether I moved their admission or not. I know that in reviewing the transcript, I think that-
You did not.
I think that Mr. Schribner made a ruling that said whether, I forget who it was, maybe it was you, Kristin, that whether they're admitted as an exhibit or the Board takes judicial notice of, it should be part of the record. So, out of an abundance of caution, I would move that they be admitted into the record.
Right. And I don't think that you had Carlino 1, which was an email communication from you to me dated December 7th, 2018. We had agreed that that would be Carlino 1, and Carlino 2 was going to be the binder of cases that you started your case by going through, so-
That's right. I marked this.
Yeah. Right. So, we have two exhibits on behalf of Carlino, 1 and 2.
I don't believe I've seen Carlino 1.
Well, I can ask for additional copies to be made.
Thank you.
And what is it, I don't remember, what is it, just the transmittal?
It's an email communication. It was concerning your opinion as to what due process rights BVA and LNR have. So, we will make a copy of this, and obviously, you can't give me your opinion on whether you object to it until you see it, so let's, let's hold that off, and we'll get back to it after we make copies. And, Mr. Prince, would you like to proceed with your witnesses?
Well, I have a preliminary matter, and now I have a question. Are you saying that we're going to admit exhibits without commenting on whether or not they're objectionable, and without resolving issues of objection? I'm just asking procedural.
With respect to the Carlino exhibits, you don't have them, you don't have Carlino 1 in front of you, so I need to get that in front of you, that you can make an objection, and then we'll issue a ruling on it.
You said number 2 is the rest of the documents. Did I understand that correctly?
Carlino 2 is the binder of cases that Mr. Kaplan handed to you at the first hearing. He provided a binder of cases.
I have it in front of me.
Right.
I would just like the record to reflect. I object to the binder of cases, and I will very simply say why. They're all presidential decisions on prior plans that have nothing to do with this plan. This is a new plan, stands on its own, has to be reviewed on its own, and what the Court may or may not have said, and understand, I say this, knowing that every time it has gone to the Commonwealth Court, a land development review for this plan, we have won. Nevertheless, they're not relevant to this proceeding, and it shouldn't be included. That's my objection.
Understood. Can you-
And I believe that they're either race judicata or collateral estoppel. They're presidential decisions, so they're, you can take judicial notice anyway, so let's just get over that and go on to whatever is next.
That's the sort of argument I don't want to get into, because in the first Commonwealth Court decision, the Court clearly said, with regard to the argument of collateral estoppel that Mr. Kaplan made before Judge Nagel, and which Judge Nagel, in his wisdom or without wisdom, decided applied, and the Court specifically said that was not the case and it would not apply. Enough said. With regard to the letter I received just a couple days ago from Mr. Fisher, I don't know whether it was from him or not, but-
Pardon the interruption, Mr. Prince. Can I have you speak at the lectern or seated at your position where there is a microphone?
Sorry, and I even noted, I had a sign there telling me to do that. So, I'll speak, and then I'll hand up what I want to hand up. I've reviewed Mr. Fisher's most recent letter, which is a legal opinion. I reserve the right to respond to his new letter. You can appreciate why, having just received it, we didn't have an opportunity to respond to it. I did, as I said, I would, last time, prepare a list of documents in support of the allegation in our prior letter, and I would propose to hand these up to the Board as an exhibit. It is a combined group of documents that I believe go to the question of his bias and prejudice.
Where's my copy?
I don't have a copy for you. I don't believe, I'll look. But in any event, we-
Objection.
Okay. So, you're asking that this-
I object to it. I haven't seen it. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
It's an issue for the Board only.
All right. I think that it's important that we provide copies to everybody, so what I'm going to ask is that you leave it here. We'll mark it BVA 3, just for purposes of identification, and we will, at the break, we will make copies of BVA 3 and Carlino 1, and we can go back to these preliminary matters. What's-
I certainly apologize. I did not anticipate that it would be for distribution, and that's why it isn't-
Well, I guess the next question is, are you okay with it being distributed? Because if there's-
It needs to be, if he's going to mark it as an exhibit.
No, I understand, but I want to make sure that he's okay, because we have to get that on the document.
I understand Mr. Kaplan's desire, and I understand the Board's position, and that's fine.
Okay.
So, just for purposes of identification, you would say that BVA 3 is a group of documents in support of your request that Mr. Fisher recuse himself. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we will add a break, make copies, and come back to those preliminary issues. Can you now proceed with witnesses?
Yes. Oh, Mr. Boldaz, to the stand.
And I can't recall, were we having the witnesses speak at the podium?
Yes.
That, you can hear them.
You may sit or stand.
You'd be able to see them?
Yes.
Let me just make sure he has the binder of exhibits. I don't know if you're going to need him to have those in front of him, but that way any witness has them at their fingertips. Give me one minute. There's, you can keep it.
Okay, thank you. Just this one?
Can I just reach my mic into the screen, please? I think it'll be a screen, so I'll do, and then the tape will help me out.
I do. I'll check. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Prince.
Mr. Boldaz, would you please state your name and position vis a vis East Brandywine Township for the record?
Joseph Stephen Boldaz, professional engineer, appointed engineer to the Township Municipal Authority.
Mr. Boldaz, you're going to have to speak up. It's hard to hear you. Thank you.
Mr. Boldaz, how long have you been the engineer for East Brandywine Township Municipal Authority?
I don't know exactly, but it's been, I would have to guess, 12 years or better.
Are you familiar with the postcard submission that was made on behalf of this plan? Postcard submission to DEP?
Yes, I am.
Am I correct that the purpose of the postcard submission was to change the module approval to gravity flow?
I'm going to object. If he's going to refer to a document, we should have the document in front of us. Such a thing is the best evidence rule, I think, so if he's going to refer to a document, both the witness and the participants should be able to see what he's got.
And I would agree. If he doesn't have it in front of him to even verify the document-
Mr. Prince, do you have a copy of that planning module?
It's in, it's in the book, in your book, madam. It's- B, there's a boy, 13.
Alls I have is 13. Is that, would that be correct? Looking at an Ebert engineering letter.
Why don't you read the first page of B13 to yourself?
Thank you.
In the first paragraph, Tara Bernard refers to it as a postcard mailer. Are you aware of that document?
Yeah, I think it's following. It's on the next page.
And did you receive a copy of the document? It says at the bottom of the letter, Joe Boldaz. That's you, right?
That's me. I do believe I received a copy of this.
Have you received a response from DEP to the postcard submission seeking permission to change the module approval to gravity flow?
Objection. It's not what the document says.
Mr. Kaplan can certainly cross-examine him if he disagrees with the way I couch the question.
The doc, he's misstating what the document-
He wasn't stating the document.
With respect, I'm not misstating anything.
I think the question's appropriate. He's asking him if he's received a response to this correspondence, I believe.
No. And saying that the purpose of this document was to change the method of transmission from a pump station to gravity. That's not what this document does.
I'll move on and address it in a different fashion, rather than hold this up and argue over the point. Mr. Boldaz, is there currently an authorized disposal system for this development known as the giant, Carlino Giant East Brandywine Development?
There's a new plan, so I'm not certain if that plan would be considered, there's a new plan, so I'm not sure if the planning is considered approved or not.
Okay.
I believe that this document indicates that the postcard mailer is to show a reduction in flow.
In 2017, the plan that was submitted, proposed, and they received module approval, did they not, for a pump station?
I don't recall if it was 2017 or not. I do recall that there was approval for a pump station at one point.
That pump station was a grinder pump station.
It was a grinder pump station.
Have you seen the current plan?
I have seen the current plan, yes.
Does it show a grinder pump station on the plan?
It does not, as far as I recall.
Do you know of your own knowledge whether or not DEP has issued a determination on whether it finds a gravity line running through LNR satisfactory?
I don't know. I don't know what DEP knows.
I want to show you the plan. Do we have a big drawing available, Mr. Pierce?
I have a set. I just want to make sure they're the right date, though, and Shrag, maybe you could. I brought what was in my office. Okay, so I'm, let me just make sure, because I want to make sure everybody's clear on the record. The plans that he's going to speak to are titled East Brandywine Center, 2018, prepared by, prepared by Arna Engineering. They are dated. The last revision date is October 16, 2018. Give me one second, I want to make sure. So these are marked, these have already been marked as board exhibit 3.
And Joe, so there's an 11 by 17 probably behind the tab 3 of those same plans.
Joe, would you come around here a minute? I want you to see this blown up. What I want to ask you about is the 20-foot-wide property sanitary sewer easement that appears on the plan. I'm sorry, Paul, what sheet is that? Sheet 20, where you can look at-
That's okay.
So you see this 20-foot-wide sewer easement? It runs across the property. Okay, you can go back to your seat, Joe. Have you personally, or Hydroterra, the firm for which you work for, requested that 20-foot-wide sewer easement to be placed on the plan?
I don't know if we, I don't think I personally requested it.
Did Hydroterra request it?
I don't recall.
Are you aware of any correspondence from Hydroterra or yourself to anybody requesting that that sewer easement appear on the plan?
I don't recall.
You don't recall, or you didn't do it?
I don't recall doing it. I don't recall making that comment, no.
Okay.
I'm not saying I didn't, I just, I'm saying I don't recall doing it.
If I tell you that I haven't my possession, the right-to-know response documents that were submitted to me by the township, and they include all of the documents allegedly issued by Hydroterra and the municipal authority with regard to this matter, and that no such letter appears, would it be your opinion that therefore there is no letter, or would you question the accuracy of what the township submitted to me?
I would think you'd have everything there that was submitted. Paul, I don't know.
At the hearing on February 24, 2017, Mr. Kaplan said at page 267 of the notes of testimony, quote, "That sewer easement and that manhole was put there at the quest of Joe Baldas, so that if there ever is a possibility of the water's residential tract connecting, there would be a manhole. That's all it is." Did you in fact request that?
I have no clue. Honestly, Paul, 2017, I've reviewed it. I can't tell you how many drawings I've reviewed since that time. I could have done it. Maybe I didn't. I don't know.
Have you seen the plans for Mapleview?
Have I seen the plans for Mapleview? What plans? The most recent plans?
Yes, the approved development plan for Mapleview.
Yes, I've seen the plans for Mapleview.
It abuts this property, doesn't it?
It does.
And in fact, opposite where this proposed sewer easement is on Mapleview, isn't there an effluent disposal pond?
I don't know. I don't have the plans.
Objection.
Asked and answered.
Objection to this line of questioning. What does this have to do with whether or not our plan complies with the ordinance? What's the difference whether Joe Baldas asked us to put that line, or the developer of the water's property did, or whether the man on the street did? The manhole is on the plan. It doesn't violate any provision of the ordinance, and this is more totally irrelevant evidence.
I'm not sure what the relevance is, but I guess, Mr. Prince, if you want to respond?
Sure, I'll respond. Mr. Kaplan's being disingenuous. He is one of the leading lights of zoning law in Pennsylvania, and he knows very well that one of the obligations is that his client has to satisfy the zoning ordinance, and you have a zoning provision which I have raised, questioning why all parties have not signed off or participated in the plan. An easement in Pennsylvania grants an interest in real estate to the beneficiary of the easement. I intend to introduce evidence in the course of these proceedings that will establish that there is a third party who has not joined in the plan. The problem is, we don't know who it is. I've asked Shrag when he testified, and he said he didn't know anything about the easement. Now, Mr. Baldas doesn't know anything about the easement. Eventually, we're going to find out who the easement is for and whether or not the easement has been granted. And if it has, that beneficiary needs to be a party to this plan, or they need to ask for a variance.
Mr. Prince, my understanding was that the easement was for a sewer line that ultimately would be dedicated to the municipal authority.
Exactly.
So that was my understanding?
Madam, I don't know where your understanding comes from, but we're in a hearing where the matter is a question of evidence. If you want to take the stand and testify to that, I will accept that.
It's a legal issue, Mr. Prince, as to, you're raising a legal issue. I'm the solicitor here, and I think I can provide a response on a legal issue.
I am not raising a legal issue.
You are raising a legal issue. The legal issue you raised was that not all parties to this application are here based on a proposed easement on a plan. And you said, "We don't know whose easement this runs in favor of. We don't know who the beneficiary of the easement is." And I'm saying, my understanding, in reviewing this plan since July, is that the beneficiary of that easement, it would be proposed to be dedicated to the municipal authority.
And that's testimony, not a matter of law.
It's not testimony. It's an interpretation of a plan that's presented to the board.
Madam, there's no sewer line there. Why would there be a dedication of a sewer line to a municipal authority in an area where there's no sewer line? And the municipal authority has no documents that you have produced in the right-to-know that indicate a wit about any sewer line running through that sewer easement. It is the great mystery that nobody wants to seem to answer. But may I proceed?
I have answered it. In the course of the development, we were asked, and I believe it was Joe, when there was potential development on the water's tract, that we run, and we put an easement on our property that would be given to the sewer authority if needed. It turns out that Mapleview on the water's residential property does not need it. The sewage effluent from a Mapleview is pumped back to the golf course. So that was lines put on a plan. No easement was granted to any third party. It was Joe being smart as a municipal engineer and saying, "Just give us this, put this on this drawing in case it's needed." There's no great mystery. It's still not relevant. If the argument is that it's an easement created in the benefit of somebody, that's not true. It's lines on a plan. That's all it is.
So, Mr. Kaplan, are you suggesting that those lines on the plan can be removed?
Objection.
They could be removed.
Okay.
They could be removed.
Okay. Thank you.
If they had been removed, Madam Solicitor, I wouldn't be exploring this line of question.
Okay.
In the course of the same testimony, Mr. Baldas, Mr. Oost was asked, Mr. Este, excuse me, if he had been a party to any discussion with regard to the sewer easement in question, and he answered, "No." Have you been party to any discussion with regard to that easement, if you recall?
My question, what are you reading from what testimony?
It's the testimony from February 24, 2017, notes of testimony. That's on pages 39 to 40.
From what proceeding?
From the last proceeding, the last hearing, in the last zoning application, oh, on your part, plan application.
Well, you can't have it both ways.
Right, exactly.
You can't sit here and say that nothing else counts, nothing before counts, and then you start, but the truth is, whatever Tom said, Tom said. What's the difference about this easement? None of this is relevant.
Mr. Prince, I have to agree. You objected to the admission of some board exhibits and said they're irrelevant because they're related to a prior plan, but then you're bringing up testimony from a prior plan. You can't have it both ways.
I asked him with regard to testimony of Mr. Oost. If you want me to delete the reference to the plan-
How can you do anything-
I mean, the reference to the notes of testimony, I can do that, but excuse me, it's relevant to ask him about whether or not- I'll revise the question, Madam, to eliminate the objection. Have you ever been party to any discussions, to the best of your knowledge, with regard to that easement?
Well, honestly, now I recall that that easement was extended over there at the request of the municipal authority in case there was a need for public sewer.
And where is that reflected, in any municipal authority document?
I have no clue where it might be.
Well, how was it done at the request of the municipal authority if there's no municipal authority document?
I don't know if there was a discussion. It could have been at a meeting. Paul, we're talking about, how many years ago? I know that there was discussion. Mr. Kaplan indicated there was discussion. Yes, I recall that now.
Now that he objected and voiced his opinion of how it happened, you remember it?
The only reason it would be shown extending to the property line would be for consideration of a future connection.
Moving on. Did the municipal authority require a Mapleview to provide onsite effluent disposal?
It's a different application. What's the difference? What's the relevance? You know what? I'll withdraw the objection.
Thank you.
It's easier to just answer.
Was Mapleview required to provide effluent disposal onsite?
Yes.
Did that satisfy the township zoning ordinance 399-47K that requires effluent disposal?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but if it's the one I'm thinking of, I think it did, yes.
And was it in accordance with Resolution 1 of 2010, a copy of which I've handed you? What's the name of the age-restricted development that's proposed for the property immediately south of the Carlino proposed water's commercial development?
I don't, it's waters, it's weavers, something.
There's an objection. What is your objection? Just that it's irrelevant?
Yes.
Mr. Prince, how is it relevant on an application that has, is in the preliminary stages of review? It hasn't even received conditional use approval yet.
Goes to the issue of whether or not the municipal authority has required onsite effluent disposal, because the testimony will show that the only property that has been developed or proposed for development in the last several years that has been excluded from that requirement is this property. And what I want to get at is, what is the explanation or justification for why this property has received special treatment?
Well, Mr. Baldas is a member of the municipal-
To establish the special treatment, Madam, I have to show that all the others have not been treated similarly.
Well, the two that you're mentioning happen to be residential subdivisions, and Mr. Baldas is not a member of the municipal authority. He's a consulting engineer. He doesn't make the policy, and he doesn't make the decisions, and he doesn't sign resolutions.
Madam, I know that. I know that better than you do. But that doesn't mean he doesn't know, because the municipal authority happens to have a resolution that requires similar compliance, number one. And number two, I'm asking him a question about it to show whether or not there has been difference. That's all. It's a legitimate question. It's relevant to this development and whether or not there has been bias and prejudice that has resulted in this development receiving special treatment that nobody else has received, which evidences the bias.
I think your question is more oriented towards the municipal authority proper versus their engineer consultant.
I had a choice. I could ask their solicitor, or I could ask their engineer. Their engineer submits all the reviews on all of the plans and thus is well familiar with it. And in fact, I asked him privately about that very question in advance, and he gave me the answer. So I trust he's going to give me under oath the same answer he gave me on the telephone.
I would say, to the best of your ability, I think we're, you know, we're arguing over split hairs here.
Well, the other answer to the solicitor's objection was that unfortunately for the objection, the ordinance does not discriminate between residential and commercial. It requires it from both.
No, but my comment was, because you said similarly situated, and I don't think that they are similarly situated, but he can answer the question.
Similarly situated in that they are new developments that are subject to the ordinance.
Right. Some are residential and some are commercial. So, Mr. Baldas, to the extent you know the answer to the question-
I wish I remembered a question.
It was whether or not, well, go ahead, Mr. Prince. Ask it again.
Has the municipal authority advised the 55 and older development proposed on the south side of Route 322? Did it need to have onsite effluent disposal?
There was a recent plan submitted. It showed onsite disposal areas. I don't believe any recent review required that, but it was shown on the plan, so we figured that it would be included.
Okay. Does the plan that has been submitted to you for this development, plan that you looked at a few minutes ago, does that plan comply with the township's 350-47B2?
I'm sorry, what's-
Objection.
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
He's asking for a legal conclusion.
He's an engineer. I'm asking him whether it complies with an engineering provision in your ordinance.
I think that Mr. Baldas does review the ordinances for compliance, so I think-
What is that, what is that?
I'm not sure what ordinance you're talking about.
I'm asking you about the township subdivision ordinance 350-47B2 on onsite effluent disposal.
Does he have a copy of that, or does he have it in front of him so that he can look at it?
No, the exhibit wasn't there in the book.
So we don't have a copy of our ordinance?
I have a copy right here, if you'd like to hand it to him.
Just for-
Can you tell him the section again, Mr. Prince? I don't think he can hear you. I didn't hear you.
I think he's-
We don't need to be funny. If you want him to answer the question, refer him and hand him the section that you want him to look at. I think that would make this hearing go a little bit smoother.
350-47B2.
I'm sorry, which ordinance is this?
Saldo.
Not, um-
Yes, saldo.
Okay. Now, maybe I can shorten this. We asked for a waiver from this section.
So it's Treatment and Disposal section, Mr. Prince? You're asking me if that plan complies with this?
And recognizing what Mr. Kaplan said, that the applicant has requested a waiver from that section.
Does that make it easier for you?
Well, I do review ordinances as I review plans. Sitting here today, I can't tell you that this and that are consistent. Alls I can tell you is we reviewed the plan, made our comments. We made a comment about sewage facility planning.
Isn't that a section on effluent disposal?
350-47 Sewer Treatment and Disposal, General Requirements, Public Sewer Section-
B2, I asked you about, Mr. Baldas.
I'm sorry, B2.
I didn't ask you about the general section.
B3 is the effluent.
Thank you. And Mr. Kaplan graciously has acknowledged that they've requested a waiver.
Could you have managed to just cut the sarcasm?
I completely agree. And I also, I can't hear you. When you talk, you're putting your head down, so it's very hard to hear you, Mr. Prince. putting your head down, so it's very hard to hear you, Mr. Prince.
Hopefully centering the mic, that'll make it a little easier.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaplan has advised that they've requested a waiver of this section. Are you aware of any physical hardship generated by or existing on the current property, physical property, that would prevent compliance with this section? This section being the one you're looking at, 350-47B2?
Objection as to relevance. It's not.
I haven't asked a single question that there hasn't been an objection to. Relevance? My God, he's asking for a waiver. The issue of hardship is in the MPC. Mr. Kaplan knows that. My God, I think he even participated in writing it.
He's misstating, he's misstating the standard for a waiver.
Well, Mr. Kaplan, you can ask him on cross-examination how I misstated it then. I think it's very clear. It says there has to be a hardship. I want to inquire about what hardship there is on that property. I have the right to ask you.
And you've asked him. He can respond.
Do you know of any physical hardship on that property that prevents the developer from presenting a plan that complies?
I do not.
Thank you. Are you aware of any development agreement that has been signed by the municipal authority and the developer for this Waters property, for this commercial development?
I'm not aware of anything.
Has the Carlino development complied with Resolution 1 of 210 that's in front of you? Municipal Authority Resolution 1 of 210.
That's basically the same reference that you just made. I would say that they have not.
I'm sorry, would you say that a little louder? I didn't hear you. Could you say they have not?
They have not complied with this. Again, it's still going, there's a planning comment out there.
Do you have your August 31st, 2018 letter to Jan Benarick in front of you?
If it's not in your document, I certainly don't have it.
It's in the book.
It's dated, it's mark B24.
You recall that letter?
I do recall that letter, yes.
It's a letter you sent?
Look, it's got my signature on there.
Is that the municipal authority review letter for the plan in question? I'm calling it the plan in question. I don't want to have to keep saying the.
Carlino plan submitted by Oarna for East Brandywine Center 2018, dated September 12th, 2018, as revised. So that's the plan in question?
My.
Is that your review letter for that plan?
This indicates June 27, 2018. I don't know, I, I don't think it is.
You don't think that's this plan?
Well, not if that one's dated September, latest revision. This one's, my, my review letter suggests.
It is June 27, 2018, as revised.
Oh, I thought you mentioned a later date than that.
Yes, it was revised on September 12th and October 16th.
Well, obviously, this letter is dated August 31st, so it predated future revisions.
Yep, I understand that.
Okay.
And I think he understands that, too. Correct, Mr. Baldas?
Well, you asked me if this letter reflects that plan. That plan is newer than this letter, so I don't know how it could reflect that plan, but it reflected the original plan that was revised June 27, 2018.
Okay. Have you issued any subsequent revisions or any additional review letters?
I don't believe I have.
So does that mean that the subsequent revisions and changes on the plan that appear before us have not come to the municipal authority and been reviewed by you? For the municipal authority?
I would say that's probably correct.
Looking at your review letter in front of you, and bearing in mind your comment about Resolution 1 of 2010, Municipal Authority Resolution, would you show me in your letter where that reference is that required compliance with Resolution 1 of 2010? Because I'll candidly tell you, I couldn't find it.
I don't believe you find it in there, but general comment number one talks about sewage facility planning. So planning would require, encompass a lot of different things.
Okay, so you think it was in, it should be inferred that it was included within that sentence?
I would think, yes.
You, you considered it that way when you wrote?
Yes.
Okay. Do you recall your review letters in, of the 2014 and 2015 plans?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. I apologize. I did have your letter for you to look at. I have nothing further.
Mr. Kaplan?
Mr. Baldas, would you go back to Exhibit 13?
Yes.
Mr., excuse me, Tara Bernard's letter, that is the first sheet, Exhibit B13, dated November 8th, 2018, merely transmits to DEP a request to lower the allocation of the number of gallons of capacity allocated in the authority system from 7,280 to 7,030. Is that correct?
That's the way I read it, yes.
That's the only thing that was done or was requested in this November 8th submittal to DEP.
I think that's what this letter does. It makes them aware of that reduction.
Okay. Now, if we go over to your October 24th, well, I, I take that, strike that for a minute. So the November 8th, 2018 letter, reducing the gallons or notifying DEP of the reduction in gallons, was with the understanding that the sewage from the proposed Carlino development would be conveyed to the townships or the authorities' system at Apple Cross, treated there and disposed on the sewage fields, the disposal fields at Apple Cross, correct?
Objection. Now, Mr. Kaplan is characterizing what the meaning of a letter is. The letter speaks for itself. He's practically read it previously, so re-characterizing it or asking Mr. Baldas to affirm his re-characterization is objection.
This is cross-examination.
It's not cross-examination.
It absolutely.
We cross-examined. This is the, you would call it redirect, because basically, Mr. Kaplan stated when he closed his case that all the board exhibits were affirmative, and he was only going to present live testimony on the waivers.
How can it be redirect when he didn't call the witness in the first place? I, I, maybe, everything I've learned in 40 years is getting thrown out the window here, but that makes no sense at all.
Could, could somebody rule on the objection? Please understand, I called him as on cross because he's a township witness.
I don't recall you saying that.
You never say to that.
But you're going to rule on the.
Yeah, I think the objection is overruled.
Do you want to hear the question back, Joe?
Please, yes.
Could you read the question back, please?
The November 8th, 2018 letter, reducing the gallons or notifying DEP of the reduction in gallons, was with the understanding that the sewage from the proposed Carlino development would be conveyed to townships or the authority system at Apple Cross, treated there and disposed on the sewage fields, the disposal fields at Apple Cross, correct?
I believe that's what was, was thought as the concept of the development, yes.
Okay, let's, um, now, let's go to your October 24, 2018 letter. It's the third page in that same exhibit. Here are four letters that are in, that are in this Exhibit B13.
As, because they were all attachments to Ms. Bernard's letter of November 8th.
Correct.
So that's why they're attached.
Mr. Baldas, tell us what this letter is.
Uh, this is basically a letter back to Mr. Peter Miller at Carlino, indicating that we've reviewed his sewage facility planning mailer from Mr. Ebert regarding the proposed development, and notably that the plant flows were reduced to 7,030 gallons per day. And basically, it states that it won't cause a hydraulic overload in the collection system.
And the first sentence of the second paragraph says, "The wastewater flows from the above project are to be collected and conveyed to Apple Cross Treatment Plant," doesn't it?
It's correct, yes.
And those flows that are conveyed to Apple Cross Treatment Plant are to be treated and then disposed of at the Apple Cross Treatment Plant, correct?
Yes, there's several forms of disposal there.
Okay, now. Can we look at the next letter, which is a letter from John Venizial to Scott Pierceall, dated June 30, 2017? Take a minute and get yourself familiar with this letter.
If it expedites things, Madam Solicitor, I'm happy to stipulate that the letter says what the letter says.
But I don't think Mr. Baldas was included in, was he?
I, can I, can I ask my question?
Yes, you can.
I would like to just ask my, my question. Mr. Baldas, my understanding of this letter is an approval from DEP for approval of a sewage facilities planning module to connect a proposed shopping center to public sewers via gravity sewers instead of a pump station and force main.
That's correct. Yes, that's what it says.
That's what it says. So the planning module that was submitted in June of 2017 was for the purpose of changing a previously approved sewer system to eliminate the pump station, correct?
I would, I would indicate, yes, that was part of the planning module submittal.
Okay, now, if we come down to the fourth paragraph, it says that the shopping center's planning module approval dated August 20, well, dated August 26, 2014, was authorized to discharge 7,280 gallons of sewage per day to public sewers. Do you recall a planning module being submitted back in 2014 to permit not only the Carlino Shopping Center, but also the BVA Shopping Center to connect to public sewer and to dispose of the sewage created by both centers into the township's sewer treatment facilities?
Objection. That's not what the letter says. Why doesn't he ask him if he received a copy of the letter and is familiar with it?
I asked my question my way.
Well, Mr. Kaplan, you've objected to every question I ask. Please don't be offended that I object to one of yours. I find a problem with you putting words in the letter that aren't there. I asked him about the letter. I asked him. I have no objection to that.
I'm asking, I'm asking him for his recollection of what this letter does.
You didn't ask him that.
But it is cross-examination, so.
Mr. Shawn.
I think the question was appropriate. Overruled. Please answer the question.
Okay. There was a previous planning module that included a grinder pump. There was a previous planning module that included, I believe, BVA's sewage. At one point, there were a lot of planning modules for this, and I couldn't tell you which one did what.
Okay, but all of them, going back, and we'll go back because there's another letter, contemplated or approved that the sewage from both of the shopping centers, the existing BVA and our proposed center, would be conveyed to Apple Cross, would be treated at Apple Cross, and disposed of at Apple Cross.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, all right. So, now, let's go back one more letter. This is a 2000, an August 26, 2014 letter, again, I believe, from John Venzial. Oh, no, this is for Jennifer Fields, who was the regional manager of the Clean Water Section of DEP, to Scott Pierceall. Approving a revision to the East Brandywine Township Official Sewage Facilities Plan. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, we're talking about the August 26th letter from DEP?
Yeah.
Talks about, in the second paragraph?
Well, in the first paragraph, it, it, instead of saying this is an approval of a planning module, her letter says approval is hereby granted by the department for the above referenced revision to the East Brandywine Township Official Sewage Facilities Plan. I read that correctly?
Uh, that's correct. That's what it says.
Okay.
It does go on to talk about this, this specific planning module.
I'm going to get to it. I want to pick the important parts, if you don't mind. The second paragraph says, "This revision provides for adequate sewage facilities planning to permit the development of a giant supermarket, a bank, and associated retail stores." That's the Carlino development, is it not?
As far as I know, it is, yes.
Now, when you come down to the last paragraph, this is the paragraph that says, "This project will be connected to the authority system via pump station and force main," correct?
That's what I read, yes.
My recollection is that this is the first approval of a planning module for the Carlino.
Objection. Mr. Kaplan is testifying. If he wants to take, if he wants to take the oath and testify with regard to, I have a few questions I'd like to ask him under oath, but I don't think he wants to do.
Mr. Prince is cross-examination, and he's cross-examining on this correspondence.
Madam, he did not. If, if the reporter will read back the question. He asked about what he personally knew.
I didn't finish my question.
I think overruled. The letter stated in the very first paragraph, approval is hereby granted.
But I can ask a question. I can ask a question saying, "This is what I believe to be true. Do you agree with me?"
Great.
The question was with regard to prior approvals.
Okay, it's been overruled, though. We're going back to the letter, Mr. Prince. We're going back to the letter. We read the first statement.
Fine. Would, would you read back my question or my half-question before Mr. Kaplan?
My recollection is that this is the first approval of a planning module for the Carlino.
Bingo.
And the rest of my question is, do you agree with that?
And I object. Number one, it's asking about planning module two.
It's been overruled. It's been overruled, it's been overruled.
Mr. Prince, it's been overruled.
I recall there were a number of planning modules for this. I recall this approval, I don't recall if there was a previous approval.
Okay. Okay. I call your attention on the second page to the second paragraph. Capacity for this project is provided consistent with the East Brandywine Township Act 537 Plan Special Study approved November 26, 2012, with the, and with the East Brandywine Township Municipal Authorities' Apple Cross Chapter 94 Waste Load Management Annual Report. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Do you recall whether or not the 2012 special study included serving the Carlino property, proposed shopping center with public sewer?
I believe it did make reference to that.
Okay. I'd call your attention to the next paragraph, the third. Please note that on March 11, 2014, the adjacent Brandywine Village Shopping Center received a DEP waiver from Act 537 Planning for its proposed connection to public sewers. East Brandywine Township should coordinate the startup of the construction activity with, with the connection of the adjacent Brandywine Shopping Center to public sewers and the decommissioning of its wastewater treatment and disposal system. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Do you recall that the Brandywine Village Shopping Center received the approval to have its sewage treated at the Apple Cross Treatment Plant and the effluent disposed of at the Apple Cross Treatment Plant back in 2014?
I do recall that.
Okay, now, the, the next paragraph, I'd appreciate, Joe, if you would read it, it talks about the CMP, the Connection Management Plan, that had been in effect back then, it talks about changing the classification of certain kinds of disposal capacity at Apple Cross, and I'd like to you to refresh your recollection, so I could ask you a question or two about that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Ready?
Yeah.
It is my recollection that when the Apple Cross Treatment Plant was permitted by DEP, that certain disposal fields at Apple Cross were designated as primary disposal fields, and at least one set of disposal fields was designated as secondary. Is that an accurate recollection of what took place?
I recall that the stormwater lagoons and spray irrigation were designated as primary, and the drip disposal fields that flank the golf course driving range were designated as a backup or, I don't want to use the word emergency, but if needed, secondary, thank you.
Okay, and at the time that the approval was received for the construction of the Apple Cross Treatment Plant, you prepared and DEP approved something called a Capacity Management Plan, didn't you?
Madam Solicitor, I'm going to object. This whole series of questions deals with what occurred in 2014 with regard to an earlier plan, number one, so it's irrelevant. Number two, it may be cross-examination, but none of this was inquired into on direct examination, it's way beyond the scope of direct. And number three, you're opening the door to other issues that the township has relevant evidence on and will necessitate calling the township to produce certain documents that were sent by DEP to the township.
Well, you guys asked him about exhibit B-13, so all Mark is doing is going through the various components of B-13.
Stop interrupting her. Mr. Kaplan, I'm struggling to be polite to you.
No, you haven't been polite, and you're rude to her.
All right, enough.
Stop it.
Oh, Ms. Camp, you now have a defender. Ms. Camp, I asked only about the November 8 letter.
And this, right, and these are attachments to the November 8 letter, so I think anything that is attached to the November 8 letter is fair game.
Then I will abide by your decision that the entire subject is now fair game.
I think it is.
Okay.
I think it's an attachment, that this, this correspondence was received as part of the current plan.
Then I would ask you to please have Mr. Pierceall pull the letter that was sent to him by John Venezial in 2014.
I know, Mr. Prince, if you want to make a further...
My cross-examination.
Exactly.
The expedits will won't delay the matter.
Continue, Mr. Kaplan, continue.
I'm sorry, could you read back my question?
And at the time that the approval was received for the construction of the Apple Cross Treatment Plant, you prepared and DEP approved something called a Capacity Management Plan, didn't you?
Capacity management, capacity management?
Yes, Capacity Management Plan was prepared as part of the special study, not so much prepared prior, it wasn't prepared prior to construction of the treatment plant, but it was prepared as part of the special study to identify capacity available and the needs associated with that capacity for treatment, storage, and effluent disposal.
And one of the areas of the township that was designated in the Capacity Management Plan for future connection to the system was the BVA Shopping Center and the Carlino Shopping Center, wasn't it?
That's correct.
And, and when the planning module was submitted, or the planning module that was approved in 2014 by this letter, specifically talks about, the special study also commits the township to update the CMP periodically. Justification to change the status of these drip fields, I'm, I'm going to strike that for a minute, let me go back and start at the beginning of that paragraph, I apologize. The module also proposed the possible use of the Apple Cross existing drip disposal field as a full-time disposal area. The township's special study provides for the implementation of a Capacity Management Plan to manage the available disposal capacity. The special study also commits the township to update the CMP periodically. Justification to change the status of these drip fields is based on the township's need to provide long-term sewage disposal capacity, not only to the East Brandywine Center of the development, but also to other properties within the Act 530 Special Studies approved sewer area consistent with the CMP. The change in the drip field status is therefore approved. Do you remember going through that process back in 2014?
Not in detail, but yes, I do, generally.
Is it fair to say, as this document says, that the township and the authority, by filing the planning module that was filed, asked DEP to approve the conversion of the drip fields from secondary to primary, so that there would be capacity to dispose of the effluent that was generated by the two shopping centers, the Brandywine Village Shopping Center and the Carlino Shopping Center?
Objection, the document says what it says, it doesn't say that. Mr. Kaplan is trying to interpret it to his benefit and change the wording. What DEP ordered is in the letter and in the letter that was sent to Mr. Pierceall the same year.
Right, but he's asking Mr. Baldas whether or not he understands what was associated with the DEP letter. I think that's fair game.
No, ma'am, exactly. No, ma'am, he asked Mr. Pierceall to change, Mr. Baldas, excuse me, to agree with Mr. Kaplan's interpretation of what the letter says.
Well, Mr. Baldas can explain his own interpretation of that letter.
That's fine, I have no objection to that.
Then he should do that. Mr. Kaplan, let him explain his understanding of paragraph four.
Wait a second, I asked a very specific question. Either, either Joe can answer it, or he can't answer it, and if somebody wants a second answer, but I asked a very specific question for a very specific reason, and I'm entitled to whatever answers you can give me.
Please proceed in answering the question.
I'm sorry, I have a short, short-term memory problem, so, can I hear the question again?
Bottom line of what I am getting at is you, the authority, everybody specifically asked DEP to approve the change of the drip fields from secondary to primary, so that there would be enough disposal capacity to treat the sewage effluent that would be generated by the BVA Center and the Carlino Center. Isn't that accurate?
That is accurate, and would include some other scragglers, if you will, smaller developments possibly.
Mr. Prince and Mr. Orlando, are you going to have follow-up questions? So what I'm thinking is, after Mr. Kaplan's done, we'll take a recess, and then you guys have your follow-up questions right thereafter.
Whatever you wish, Chair.
Mr. Baldas, Mr. Prince gave you Resolution 01 of 210, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do, right here.
This resolution in paragraph two states that if, if determined feasible by the authority in accordance with section one above, the storage and land disposal area shall be located on the same parcel as the subdivision or land developed. Then goes on to, say, in paragraph three, if the on, if onsite storage and disposal is determined by the authority to be unfeasible due to location, operational reasons, soil conditions, or other limiting factors, off-site storage and disposal shall be utilized. Did I read the two of them correctly?
You did, yes, you did, as far as I can tell.
In approving the planning modules for Carlino Shopping Center, going all the way back to 2014, each of which provided for sewage disposal to be at Apple Cross, didn't the authority make a determination that it was its judgment that that's where sewage disposal, sewage, treated sewage disposal, treated sewage effluent from the Carlino Development will be disposed of?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
And I don't know whether you recall this or not, but do you remember the authority, no, strike that, I'm not sure that we have it, do you recall the authority entering into an agreement, a treatment agreement with Carlino, where the authority approved the transmission of the Carlino sewage effluent to the Apple Cross Treatment Plant, treatment there, and disposal of that effluent at Apple Cross?
Objection, Madam Chair, we are clearly going into 214 issues, and we are going into testimony that took place at the last hearing, which you precluded me from going into. He is raising a question about an agreement that was in the testimony I was attempting to get at, that I was barred from introducing.
And I would agree, we also don't have the, the case in front of us, or the document you're speaking of, and we're not sure if it is in here.
Well, the point, I, I, okay, my, my point, just so the board understands it.
But I'm going to object to Mr. Kaplan now testifying as to what his point is.
The objection was sustained.
Okay, all right. Do you have any recollection of the authority passing a resolution specifically waiving Carlino's obligation to create onsite sewage disposal fields on its property?
Objection, Madam Solicitor, it's the same issue.
No, it's not, that's relevant to this plan, if it's relating to this plan.
May I finish? He didn't ask him about this plan, because it didn't occur with regard to this plan.
I'm assuming his question related to this current plan, so if it didn't...
If he asked that, I have no objection.
No, no, I am talking about historically what happens.
No, I think that, let's be specific to this plan.
Well, if you're going to talk about Resolution Number 01 of 2010, there, I read what it says, and the authority previously agreed, it's entered into...
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mrs. Chairman, he is trying to...
Kaplan, can we, let's, let's do it this way, if the question relates to, did the municipal authority, in reviewing this particular 2018 plan, make that determination, I think is an appropriate question?
Okay, I'll ask this a different way. Okay, so let's come back to your review letter.
B-24.
Yeah. Mr. Baldas, I think, Mr. Prince, that you established...
Same exhibit number?
Twenty-four.
I'm sorry, twenty-four, okay.
This is your review of the first version, the original version, the June 27 version of the plan that's before us at this point.
Yes.
And, and that plan showed connection of the Carlino development to the township's sewage collection system, transmission of the sewage to the Apple Cross plant for treatment and disposal, correct?
That's correct.
Nowhere in this letter did you, on behalf of the authority, say, "No, Carlino, you can't do that, you have to dispose of, you have to provide disposal capacity on your property," correct?
That's correct.
Done, no further questions.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to take a, let's take a... Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to take a, let's take a, let's be back a quarter of, that's about seven, eight minutes, and then you'll have your follow-up questions for Mr. Baldas.